Motion move back into open session.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, that we move back into open session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The first item on the agenda would be public appearances, and we do have one. Mark and Kelly.
Toyo.
Toyo, sorry. And they would like to be there here to speak to us on open enrollment. And this item is on our agenda later. And we won't really get into our full discussion now, but if some of you have some clarifying questions to ask them when they finish speaking, that would be fine. So if you'd like to come up and at the speaker's table, there are microphones, that way it's good.
Well, thank you for letting us speak. I'm Mark Toyo, this is my wife Kelly. And we just specifically want to talk about the open enrollment issue and kind of your board policy 423. And I just want to give everybody kind of a quick timeline of kind of what happened. A lot of this is in your agenda, and I'm sure, you know, you guys will talk about it later. But we currently have a student at Winnequa. He's an open enrollment student. He just finished second grade. So he's been there three years. And when we did the open enrollment application this late January, early February for our number two son, your board policy 423 at the time that was posted, public record, you know, clearly states that siblings of students already in the district, you know, shall have preference for enrollment and be accepted for enrollment. So then a few weeks go by, we get the denial letter for our son Henry, and we were kind of super surprised because it kind of directly contradicts what the policy says. So that kind of led me to a meeting with Dan, and we kind of talked about some things. And that kind of led us to where we are here. And I just kind of want to reiterate that that policy that was public record, that was on record for like the whole application period, you know, months basically. And it would still be public record to this day if I didn't bring it to the board's attention, Dan's attention. And I guess what we're looking for, as you know, in the discussions later, is for the board to, you know, seriously discuss it, you know, honor and abide by the policy that was posted in public record. I mean, decisions on our part as a family were made on that policy as it was, as it stood. And so now, when we find out that there's a different policy that was, I think, supposed to be enacted, you know, things have changed. But all, but the knowledge we knew at the time, you know, was not that. So we're just, we're looking for open discussion, serious consideration on how that policy was in error, actually. And some possible solutions that we've kind of discussed with Dan about, you know, maybe adding some open enrollment seats for Winnequa kindergarten that would allow our son to be accepted based on the policy that was posted in public record. So that's kind of what we're here to talk about today. And my wife has a few comments kind of on maybe your 4K procedure, maybe as it stands now, moving forward.
Hi, I'm Kelly. In my perspective on all of this was I just had concerns about the policy that was supposed to be or an intended policy at the time but was not there, basically said that, you know, that it would give preference to siblings that are already in the district. Well, that changes a lot for us because we didn't, we chose, sorry, as a family not to do the 4K program. And at any rate, it gave us no opportunity to get into the district. Sorry, I'm nervous. It gave us no opportunity to get into the district if we choose to enter kindergarten. So I guess from our perspective for future kids, we want kindergarten to be considered also an entrance to the district, not just 4K. Because there's plenty of families that are working families or stay-at-home parents that choose to keep their kids at home with them for that fourth year and wait until they turn five to start school.
Yeah, and I think to piggyback that really quick, I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but traditionally, 4K was, I don't think was really enacted to be the start of school. So, and it's kind of what it's led into being for certain reasons that, you know, I'm sure everybody's aware of. But, so, I, you know, I agree and fully support what she said in regards to that as well. So we're open, you know, to answer any questions if anybody has any now, and we'll certainly listen intently for the discussions later.
Susan, are we, are we procedurally planned having a discussion about this now, or when we get to it?
No, when we get to it on the agenda, but I thought if there were clarifying questions now.
Well, the clarifying questions, I guess I would have, would be for Dan.
Okay.
So should we wait until?
Well, unless you have one about the policy, I mean, I think one thing, when your, when your first child came, the policy on the books at that time would have said, because it did say, that we would give preference to siblings of current, so there was never a policy that said we would automatically accept siblings. The first policy that, in your mind, implied that would have been this one that was misposted this year. Any policies prior to that said give preference, if we go back and look at them in the past. And this was, yeah, was clearly an error, as it said, because it reads now, shall have preference for enrollment, be accepted for enrollment. So it clearly is giving you two choices. That clearly was a rough draft that shouldn't have been posted. So that's one thing. I guess I just want to clarify that when your first child came in, the existing policy at that time said that siblings would be given preference. So you were kind of taking a chance at that point, and hoping that your, that your, the second child would come in, because it wasn't clear.
But if we did 4K, we would have not, we would not be sitting here right now.
Right.
Because that policy changed, we had zero time to change our decision. We now are the kindergartner that can't go into 4K for our second child.
Right. Oh, I guess what I was saying is the policy didn't change. I mean, the posting changed this year, but the original policy that was on the books two years prior to this, up until this fall, whenever we posted this.
December.
December, up until December of this past year, 2013, the previous policy that was on the books up until that time said we would give preference to siblings. So that was made clear at that time. The other thing about 4K, it isn't like it's, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's not officially the period of entry. What happens in 4K is we sort of take more of a calculated risk because we accept more kids, I mean, we accept more kids in 4K than we really can handle, but that's because our experience has shown that about half of them don't come. They choose it, I think, because of daycare needs and that kind of thing is part of it. So we sort of, we always balance that, and that's kind of played out so that it's worked. And it's because we have what's a good problem in our eyes, which is increasing enrollment of residents, that has put a, put some limits on our open enrollment. I mean, we did have, what, 295 applicants this year district-wide, and we're only taking 60 or something. I mean, we can't, you know, so that, I mean, we're, it's a good problem for us to have, but I understand it's frustrating for you. So it's, yeah, it's just, and we will have this discussion.
If I may, with all due respect, we're, I'm kind of talking about the here and now and the policy, not really two years ago, we're talking about kind of the policy here and now, you know, with all due respect. And then, and then, I guess lastly, as part of the discussion later, I mean, you know, we're hopeful that a resolution will happen because, to be honest, we need to make a decision as we've got our, you know, son approaching kindergarten soon.
So there, I would ask a clarifying question. You are, what you're really asking of us is that we waive this policy essentially, waive what we under, what our policy really is, and accept your child now.
Well, you know, with all due respect, the policy would still be posted in error if I didn't bring it to the attention. The policy as it was stated was during the application process.
Sure.
I mean, you know, I don't know really what else to say. It's, that's kind of what we thought was going to happen.
I'm just trying to get what you're hoping, what you're hoping for a resolution.
Well, because otherwise, we have to go through the appeal process. That's us. We have to go to the DPI and tell them what happened, and then wait till the end of summer to get our, our response.
I just wanted everybody to be clear on what you're asking.
Sure.
And then we need to find backup plans. And we probably would have thought of B, C, and D options back then, you know, do we put them in private school?
Right.
Do we pull our son that's currently in Winnequa?
Right.
To have our families together. Because what we do is, we're so involved in the community that we don't want to split between, we want to keep, you know, we volunteer here in the school, we volunteer in the rec department, Manona's kind of become our home, so.
Yeah, and then real quick, lastly, you know, had the policy as it stands now been public record at the applicant, like I said, we would have made a plan B and C, but like you read it, it clearly states to be, you know, they're accepted. So we didn't really make a plan B and C because we didn't think we needed to as the policy was written. So that's kind of why we're here.
That clarification is kind of where I was going to use.
Dan, how long was that policy posted in error?
In December is when we approved the revised policy. So it was posted in December 22nd, and then it stayed on until a couple of weeks ago when I met with the Toylors and realized it was incorrect.
So six months.
Yeah, yes.
Have you, I'm sorry, have you had any other families approach you with this same issue?
Not with, no, not with this issue.
That was kind of my question. I was wondering how many other families or applicants do we have that this affected as far as that you know?
There, I mean, there are other applicants with a similar situation who were denied at kindergarten age, but none of them approached me.
Due to siblings?
Right. Yeah, there are, there are five total kindergarten applications who had siblings currently attended. So five applications were denied in a similar fashion.
So I might be jumping ahead in our discussion if you would prefer to have this later in the agenda, but if we were to waive this scenario for this family, then would the district go back and approach those families and say, you have an opportunity?
That probably is getting around to more of our discussion. Yeah, agenda, especially, so, anyone have, all right, then you're certainly welcome to stay, and if we have questions or anything to answer.
Sure, we have any to answer questions among the discussions, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is consent agenda. Could I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda somewhere?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Then correspondence and announcements.
I don't have any tonight. I don't know if any of our administrators have any announcements, see your names?
No.
Okay.
Then we'll move on to administrative reports, and we have the superintendent's report first.
And for those, I did add a couple additional items, you know, later on, disinformational. So I'll go through these briefly. If you want any clarification, I could expand upon these. Just want to inform you that we did have our district leaders retreat last week, and really thrilled with the outcome, it was an entire day that we spent with the purpose of really looking at, we're at the end of a three-year cycle of our continuous improvement plan. We are going to extend it for a fourth year, but to really evaluate what's been effective, what hasn't, prior to us bringing in our school improvement teams in August, to set our action plans. And so we have some more discussion, but like I said, it was really good. You'll get a much more detailed report in August, and we look at our actual data for our past year, and looking at what our, you know, improvement plans are for the upcoming year. But it was kind of a good first step to refocus, and I'm really excited about the work that we have coming ahead. So I did include as an attachment just the agenda of that day, and it's, I don't want to, you know, real detail tonight. I certainly can ask and answer any questions if you have, but we'll give a very detailed report in August.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Secondly, project-based learning unconference, and this is something that our MG21 staff co-hosted with a project-based learning conference with two other organizations. I put a link to their website. It was wonderful. We had over 100 educators. They used our third floor conference center from all throughout the United States. And our teachers, you know, Rebecca and Ian, of course, were wonderful hosts, and I had an opportunity to pop in and observe a little bit, to listen to the keynote speaker. So I wanted to bring your attention, first of all, to recognize our staff that was involved, but also, again, thrilled that we're able to use this, you know, facility in a very positive, you know, way as well. So, and I expect there will be many more opportunities like that in the future. Okay, third, is kind of more of an announcement, AODA Town Hall Meeting. There's been two groups that were formed over the past year, one in Manona, one in Cottage Grove. They've called themselves the Manona Cares Group and the Cottage Grove Cares. And the initial work of those groups, they're volunteer, Kathy Kalina is the person that kind of facilitates. And, you know, they looked at a social host ordinance with regard to underage, or hosting underage drinking. And then we've also looked at, you know, other drugs as well, and what is the use in our school district of our students, and what sorts of things can we do to provide support for parents, you know, outside of the school. And certainly our school district wants to partner with any effort, but this is really a non-school group, but we have a number of school representatives that have been part of it as well. A number of our administrators have participated from time to time, and, you know, board members as well, Susan has regularly attended. I think Susan Manning was involved as well, and I've tried to tend as many as possible. But looking ahead, there is going to be a Town Hall Meeting, where again, we're going to use our conference center here on the third floor, September 29th. I have a lot more information to follow, but we've set the date, we've set the general discussion of it, and then we're in the process of putting together the final plan posters, how we're going to distribute, you know, as a district, we'll certainly support this by distributing information to all of our parents, you know, as well, and really just looking at, you know, informing of parents what is going on with our students, and what are some things that we can perhaps do to help you as a parent, you know, with your child, to prevent or in case, you know, of other things as well. So this is a, is this an evening? This will be the evening, I'm sorry, I didn't put a time on it, yes.
I think we were talking about 6:30.
Yeah, I think an hour and a half, we looked at 6:30 to 8 o'clock. And there'll be a guest, you know, presenters, and so, again, kind of finalizing the loose ends on that, yeah, so. Who does the agenda, they, both those groups, they do the agenda as far as what they're going to be, topics they're going to discuss, or do we have input? Yeah, we have input. The planning meetings Susan and myself have been attending, and so we've had quite a bit of input trying, and one of the, well, we've had, again, some of our ministers, Shannon Dentez, who is one of our school psych at the high school, has been at the majority of the meetings.
Paul Bros was at some.
Paul, yeah. And, and so we've tried to make sure we talk about, here's what we do in the school, there's certainly more we can do in the school, but let's, you know, kind of look at what we do versus what might be helpful more of a, as a, you know, informational thing. We had a lot of discussion, should this focus on parents, parents and students, and I think we've talked about the idea that this will be more of a focus for parents and community, interested community members as well.
And we kind of thought with, the grant that Kathy has is specifically addressing underage drinking. That's what the main impetus was for this and the social host ordinance, but the more we talked about it, we felt like there are more concerns about other prescription drugs and other drugs as well, and so we kind of wanted to broaden it. But I would say, yeah, if any of you have thoughts on things that we should include for sure.
I was thinking prescription, prescription drugs and even over-the-counter, over-the-counter drugs as well.
Right, and I think, and that's kind of where we've come around of all the thinking, and as Dan said, we've sort of scaled it down to just parents, and we thought by doing it kind of at the beginning of the school year, when people are coming back to school, and it might be more on people's minds, and that we might be able to get some people to show up and sort of see where people are. Yeah, any, if you ever hear of good speakers or have ideas along the way, we're just at that point of putting that part together, so send them along, that'd be great. And you're always welcome to come to the meeting list, if you want to be added to the email list.
Okay. Next item, again, it's just kind of an FYI, the media coordinator position, as you know, is a joint effort between the city of Manona and the school district. The person is actually employed by the city of Manona, but then we contract with them for services, and of course, the primary thing they do is work with our students at the high school with media, as well as things like video, you know, or filming our board meetings. And so they've had a first round of interviews, they did invite me to participate with that interview process, and looking at job description and so on, Paul Bros has been very involved with that as well. And so there is final interviews coming up shortly, and expect to have a new person in place at least by August 1st. And based upon, you know, can, I'm real excited that, about, again, not only continuing the work that we've had with the partnership with the city, but perhaps even enhancing more so in the future. And the other piece of that, of course, is that the city has recently received the license for FM radio, you know, piece. And so they've made a decision that this person will, you know, help coordinate that as well. I think, and they'll talk, ideally, it might be two people, but of course, the budgetary constraints, that that just was not, you know, feasible at this point. So certainly as the person's hired, and any changes to enhance what we do as a school district, I'll certainly report to the board, you know, in the future.
Questions?
Dan, I would just add that some of the pieces that I think the board needs to really be thinking about is with the radio, there's a significant amount of focus on the radio and doing the radio thing. And the other factor about the radio is it's going to be based in City Hall, not in the high school. So, you know, I'm not exactly sure how that will, how that will affect the direct participation of students, so I think we just need to stay tuned into that.
Yeah.
And then hoping to maintain what we have in the video setup and the opportunities, our kids have just had great benefit and great opportunities and exposure through the current processes at the high school, so.
Yeah, and everyone aware, I mean, there is actually a committee that the city, they right now call it the Broadband Cable Commission, and that Susan sits on as well. And, and I agree, the number one priority for us, of course, is our student experience, you know, with it. But if we can, you know, enhance a little bit, you know, even things about, we talk about with our communications, there's a real opportunity for us to utilize those services as well, but certainly not to compromise, you know, the student experiences.
Yeah, and I think they did say with the radio, a lot of the programming can be done offsite, so I'm hoping that that means, it could be in our, what's now our cable stage, studio at the high school, could be operating from there, because I think radio is something that will appeal to a lot of students, so it's kind of an exciting opportunity, hopefully. So, okay.
Okay, and then one final item. If we recall, reported a while back about, and a number of you attended as well, the MGA sponsored a meeting back in April titled Building a Better School District Through Collaboration and Communication. And we have since had two follow-up meetings with a small group. Again, Susan and myself have attended, Ann Trader's able to attend one meeting, and then a couple of parents and community members and a couple of teachers, and just to continue that discussion. And, and we've, I think they've been productive meetings, and really, it was an opportunity to share again what we've been working on as a district with regard to communication as well, and protect primarily, you know, internal communication, but also with the community. And so I think any avenue we have to discuss that and get other people involved and feedback is, to me, a positive thing. So I think we can never have too many meetings of that sort to talk about it. So I think, you know, that group will meet perhaps one more time, and I think, I don't know if it's necessarily a plan, but there's some things that we talked about that might enhance what we're doing, the work that the board or myself, and I think we can give those details as those fleshed out as well.
Yeah, I think that's a, there's a doodle doc Jeff to check on.
Yeah, I'm, Jeff is also participating, yes.
Right, yeah. But next, there will be one more, so, any other questions about that? All right, then, moving on, the next item is the Human Resources Report. Nicole?
All right, so I just want to give you a brief update on our support staff staffing for 1415. As you've all seen this document, so you've seen where FTEs have changed, so I just want to give you a little bit of background on what these numbers are. So starting with our building and administrative assistants, you'll notice that now there's a 200 and, an extra 260-day administrative assistant and a reduction in 240-day administrative assistant. What happens there is that at Winnequa, administrative assistant who is 240 days has now transferred to the district office and to be the role of the Director of Curriculum Instruction's Administrative Assistant. And so with that transfer, we have decided to post that position as 260 days to give year-round support in that building. Next, and under the Business Services Department, you'll see that there's a new position called Business Services Specialist. If you look down below in School Nutrition, we have Administrative Assistant to School Nutrition Coordinator. That position has been eliminated, and that will be absorbed by this Business Services Specialist. So the Business Services Specialist will be handling some food service issues, will be working with task management, will be helping with grants, will be helping with balance sheets, will be doing, wearing many, many hats in the Business Services Department. The curriculum and instruction, the Administrative Assistant to Director of Instruction, that has increased, when Gina was here, she was 75 percent, and the new person that has transferred will now be full-time to provide full-time support to that department. With our facilities, we had a few retirements, so we did a little bit of realignment. So you'll notice that the district service person, district grants person, those numbers have changed a little bit based on our needs. We are also adding a night lead that will be a district-wide position, but it'll be housed here in the district office to help provide support here, and that we have night meetings, be helping with MG21 as well. Apparently, they've been cleaning some of their own rooms, and this will assist in keeping that area very clean as well. Under Information Systems and Technology, notice we are adding a Technology Operations Specialist. This is due to needs in the district. We need additional support for Skyward and for Infinite Campus, so we need some additional network support there. Under our paraprofessionals, as we remember in our Certified Staffing Plan, we added three reading interventionist positions, and so as part of that, we were reducing our paraprofessional interventionists in the district, since we'll now have certified staff members filling those roles. We had a couple retirements this year, and so we did not replace those with attrition. School nutrition, as I mentioned, the administrative assistant position has been eliminated, but that work will be picked up by the Business Services Specialist. And the other change is under transportation, since we'll now be working with Nelson's bus service. Any questions? Mary? Thanks.
Then the, the item on the agenda is the Manona Grove Education Foundation Report.
Susan? The Manona Grove Education Foundation met in June, and they continued almost continuing to discuss the fundraising event, which is going to be the roast of the MG High School football coach, Mike Stassi. And they are going to be having that in November at the high school, I think, 15. And then they're continuing to discuss generally specified use of the funds for the sports complex at the high school. There was further discussion relating to new board members, they're still talking about that, and possible changes to the teacher grants, and building an ongoing relationship with the Manona Senior Assistance Center, and ongoing work on the Eat Out for Education Program. And the next meeting is scheduled for July 15th, so it's not the second Tuesday, it's going to be, I think it's the third Tuesday, I think it's 15. And I'm not going to be in town, so I was asking, I asked Susan if she would attend that coming.
And I, so, on my calendar, thank you. Any questions for Susan? November 15th, I believe.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I.
We're counting it up, far enough ahead for the road.
Down to, yeah.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, and the first topic of conversation is discussion of the open enrollment policy 423. And we do have the, both the copy that was posted on the website and the correct copy that we actually approved in December are both in your board docs. And Dan, do you want to say?
Sure, and as we talked a little bit previously, back in December, the board approved a revised open enrollment policy. The major reason that the policy committee even looked at that is there was a change, if you remember, in the course options law, was a new piece that replaced the old part-time open enrollment rule. And so we revised the policy based upon that. Well, while we were looking at the policy, we decided to look at a rewrite, just to clean it up. We did have some sample language from the, you know, School Board Association, and so the new policy was meant to read a little bit clearer. During that time, we did take the opportunity then to discuss the, you know, provisions of the policy, particularly with regard to waiting lists and the random selection process. As you know, for several years, the districts had many more applications than the board has been able to approve, and so we thought it was a good opportunity to review that, is this the procedure that we want to continue to follow. And one of the little things that we discussed quite extensively was, number one, students who are currently in the district, their families move out of the district, they actually have to reapply for open enrollment. They can stay for that year in a tuition waiver, but they have to reapply. Do we want to guarantee a seat that they can stay regardless of space? And that was what the current policy stated. The policy committee agreed, yes, that's a good practice, and that stayed in the policy. The second thing we talked about is what about siblings of students who are already in, and that's the discussion tonight. And so it was very clear that, you know, the old policy did say preference for seats, and the committee agreed without question, we want to try to keep families together. So there was never a doubt about that. We did raise a question, well, should we go a step further and actually guarantee a seat for siblings? And so with that, we had several drafts. And so with that, we had several drafts, and we had one in there where we had kind of both options as a draft. Just as we were, you know, we kind of highlighted which one, where we're going to go. Ultimately, the committee decided that because of uncertainty with space, that it would be prudent to leave it as a preference and not a guarantee. That's the policy that the board approved on December twenty-second. The policy that was actually approved at the board meeting that was on your board docs was the correct version, and so it really wasn't a change. But what happened following the board meeting, of course, we always imposed to the website, the revised policy. And we had so many, you know, drafts and revisions, just inadvertently grabbed the wrong one, and that's what got posted to the board doc, or to me, to the website. Jessica.
So it's my understanding from what you just described that this conversation took place solely in the policy committee. And the full board never heard any discussion about the possibility that we might change that from preference. To a guarantee, so to speak.
It just was kind of. If we made the change, if we made the change, we would have, we would have highlighted that and shown that that was.
Well, except it wasn't a change, we were keep, that had always been our policy.
I just want me to just finish my question really quickly, because my recollection is, is that the full board didn't hear. This is the first I've heard of it, so I wanted to make sure I wasn't losing my mind.
You're absolutely right, the committee discussed it at length, ultimately, the committee chose not to recommend a change. So thus, when it came to the full board, what we pointed out was the actual change in the policy, which was eliminating the part-time open enrollment. And the Course Options piece, so you're right, the full board never had a discussion about the siblings, because there was not a change.
It was not a change from press practice.
That's actually, yes.
So when this inadvertent error was, was put online. This was during the time that parents would be looking at this information and be making plans for the rest of the school year for their kids. So I get, am I correct in that?
Yes.
Like, for example, this particular family.
Yeah, that was the rationale for the.
Looking at their, okay, what's going on.
To get this approved because the open enrollment period started in February, so we wanted to make sure it was done in time for that. So that's absolutely correct, it was posted during that time.
Well, I think that it's always, certainly been my impression since I've been on the board for the past almost six years. That we have always, once we've taken a child in, we have always tried to have their siblings then join them. That's always been my impression, so I was kind of like, really? This is the first I've heard of this. And especially, I guess, just from reading this, reading through the drafts, I can understand mistakes happen, of course. But, you know, having a child that's about to go into four K myself, I know that this is a period of time where you really need to start figuring out what you're going to do with your kids. Especially, you know, we're almost in July right now, so it would definitely be my hope that we would do what we needed to do. Especially because this error is, is on us as a district to help this family bring their other child into, you know, our, our family here. Which they've, they've already done.
And that, the next item on the agenda, I just want to clarify this, is a discussion of possible approval of our recommendations. So if the board chooses to make a change in their actual recommendation, that would be the time to make that, this is a fine time to make that comment. I just want to make clear, we're not going to take the actual.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we chose to list it separately on the agenda to clarify the policy piece first, then we can move on to talk about the.
To clarify kind of what happened, and the fact that we right now use the goal number of students as, when we determine open enrollment, we look at the goal number. We've tried not to go above that, that's a piece of policy.
And this is my last question, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And I don't know if this is the agenda item to ask this question or the next, but I'm assuming that you have looked as well in this particular case. That our numbers are going to.
Yeah, I'll in the next item give you the update on how this would impact our number, or class size and so on, for how it has impacted, yes.
Yeah, that would be one of my questions as well, I'd like to see how that would affect if we were to go back. And I think go back and at least offer the opportunity, because we were in fault, whether or not those parents choose to still bring their students or not. Then at least we went back and tried to correct an error that we made. But I guess the question that I have is, I'm also in agreeance with Jessica, I thought this was always something that we did with this policy. And I guess I'm, I'm having a hard time, explain to me the difference between how we're saying guarantee and preference.
Sure.
And how we're using that.
Yeah, if we, when we look at our projected class sizes for, you know, the following year. And for the most part, we kind of cast forward, we also know that there's a possibility people move in in the summer and so on. But nonetheless, we look at that and we look at where our class size, not only the guidelines, but also the goal. Based upon that, will, you know, while Jared and I primarily, we've discussed certainly with the principals as well. And determine, we make a recommendation to the board saying, we think that we can allow this many seats at each grade level. And so, for instance, four K this year, we recommended, and the board approved, ten seats at four K. So once we had that board approved for those ten seats, we had far more than ten applications. So now we go to random drawing, well, the first thing we do is we look at all the applications who are siblings of students currently attending. They go in the hat first, and we choose those, if there's less than ten, those siblings automatically get in, that was the case this year. Everyone who was a sibling got in, however many seats are less left, now go to everyone else on the random piece.
So if there was more.
Then that, right, if there had been more than ten siblings, only ten would have gotten in, the first ten picked, the others would not have.
And that's always been our point, what we've done, and normally it works out, usually it works out, we can get all the siblings in. But we have said such an expansion of open enrollment these days that now we're not in the same place. And we're letting, we, we drive our class sizes, I mean, our class sizes and capacities and so on drive the open enrollment. And so that's creating conflict between, this is why this is, I guess this is an issue now.
That's my understanding that in the past, most of the time siblings, I don't know if it's most or always.
I think it was, it was pretty much, it was always, almost, for a long time.
A period on the board before most of us got on the board, when we were, you know, the board, the previous board, I think, was accepting open enrollment. People without really paying attention to class size goals, and our class sizes started to creep up, and that was a major concern. And we actually, and we had concerns with the infrastructure of some of our buildings, namely Glacial Drummond, in terms of that being a bottleneck. And that would be the time when you remember going back in the policy committee, rewriting the policy so that we could decline to accept someone. Based on the size of the school, the capacity of the buildings, as well as, because we were concerned about that, we thought, well, it's negatively impacting. Our own resident students if we continue to exceed our goal all the time and get big class sizes. When, one of the things we were always proud of was that we had smaller class sizes, and we felt that was an advantage, and we really didn't want to. Even though we were making money on open enrollment, we kind of put a stop to that, really five, six years ago, when we changed that policy the first time. But when we changed the policy the first time, it was simply to add some language that said we could decline based on the capacity of a building. In addition to just the class, whether there was space in the class sizes, there was never anything done about, it was still always preference for siblings. So that was the only change, and then the recent change in December was the one due to the, of course, the Course Options statute.
Prior to that case, several years ago, Madison didn't allow open enrollment out. For anybody.
For anybody, yeah.
They didn't allow open enrollment out, and when they did, our open enrollment went up by a factor of three or four.
That's, that's true, because there was a per case, right, about that, I think there was a per case.
Mike was involved in that.
That's what, that was what led to the change. Right, the per case was. That led to the change where they started okaying it, that's when our numbers went way up. And then, and initially, we couldn't accept open enrollment for four K, because the open enrollment law has always been such that. The district has to have the program, Madison didn't offer it, now that they offer it, that has caused our four K numbers to go up as well. Because we can accept four K now as well, so yeah, it's been, it's been a combination of law changes and other things that have.
I mean, that is one of the things that's happened, is that, that over the last three or four years, there have been several things that have happened that have just thrown our whole open enrollment. In a, you know, when the law changed about Madison at all, letting students out at all, and then four K came along, and there was the differentiation between four K and Madison not having four K. We couldn't accept open enrollment since, these things together, our, our policy has been evolving along, and it's been forced by these changes that have come along.
I, I think too, again, it's important that you kind of remember that evolution piece where previous boards accepted almost all open enrollment students.
But it was like.
That was the benefit.
And that's why I was just saying this.
The budget was, and until we had serious, you know, we started to have classroom issues at Glacial Drummond. And we didn't want to not keep a student, even though you're allowed to, to reevaluate that and then re-decide once. We didn't want to do that, so there was some question about whether or not our policy was clear on being open tonight based on billing capacity. So we clarified that, that time.
Okay, so any questions on the policy then? Okay, and what happened within what, okay.
Then we can move to the next item, I'm sorry.
So is that, that policy has since been corrected and updated?
The one that was approved by the board has now been posted on the website, right? And so, and your board docs, you have, there are three of them, the one that says draft, posted on website, was the incorrect. The one following that that says eight twenty-three, approved twelve eighteen, that's the one that is the actual policy approved by the board that's now posted. The third one is actually the one that was back in two thousand nine, that had been in place prior to, you know, the change. That had the similar language about the preference, but, so.
Right, okay. Then we'll move, move on to the next item, which is discussion and possible approval of the open enrollment recommendations for two thousand fourteen, fifteen, so.
We haven't thought about. So we're having discussion now, we're going to go.
Well, now we're moving to discussion and possible approval of the actual numbers. So if there was an inclination on the board to change that recommendation, this would be the time that would occur.
Okay, thanks.
Jessica.
I would like to make a motion to approve additional open enrollment seats for two thousand fourteen, fifteen for siblings of students currently attending. Under open enrollment.
Well, first of all, is there a second? Well, I, well, we can make, we can have a second.
I like to make motions.
No, we can have a second, but then I think we do need to get some additional information, because Dan only mentioned five kindergartners, there are more. There are like, I think, twenty something, so anyway, we can't discuss it till we get a second, so is there a second on that motion?
My second.
Okay, so it's a move in second that we expand the number to include siblings.
Pull the screen, the document, the one you prepared that showed.
Twenty-two, yeah, so it's, so it affects more classes than just this one.
Okay, so you do have that document on board docs, it shows in, highlighted the fourteen, fifteen approved. And again, the eighty-one approved were the new seats we opened at four K, ninth grade and tenth grade. Plus all the ones who had moved out of the district, so they could, basically had to prove that based upon policy. So the far right column is the information of all the siblings that have been denied, twenty-two. So we mentioned five in kindergarten, that's three at Winnicott, two at Taylor Prairie kindergarten, and you can see by school, all the different grade levels. Okay, so based upon Jessica's motion, that would be opening up twenty-two additional seats at those grade levels. As far as how that would impact class size, if you look at the other document on board docs, that shows our current projection. As of June eighteenth, I understand this is still a projection with how, you know, students moving in and out of the district, you know, throughout the summer. And what we have on there are the current average class size, what the guidelines are by policy, as well as the class size goal. And as was stated earlier, the recommendation had generally been based upon the goal. But your policy does allow you to increase up to the guidelines if you would so choose. One other point I would make is with regard to the, the current projection, that, that word projection is pretty critical. For instance, I had a conversation with Connie recently about her five K at Taylor Prairie. Right now, you see on the total, we have one hundred fifty projected, Connie actually knows of one fifty-three. That likely will attend, that maybe just haven't filled out their registration papers, and that will continue throughout the summer. Now, we've certainly could have people move out as well, but that's one that we're, we're right now, even with that number, above the goal. And we're getting real close to, if we do get those students coming back to the board and saying, we need another section there to get that number back down to the goal. We would be able to do that if we had the additional students, we need to rearrange some classrooms, rearrange some schedules, but certainly the class size is really important. And so we're not ready to make that recommendation tonight, but we're going to watch it closely, and then perhaps the July meeting if the numbers, you know, come up.
When will we have a number to know that?
Well, the official, we won't know till basically, yeah, first day of school.
First day of school, so we need to add a class.
No, we would, I think we'll try really hard to know, I mean, the latest would be August.
I mean, I'm all for it, I mean, I wouldn't want my kid in a.
Absolutely not, so I, I think August is when we'll have a real good idea, we'd much rather do it now or July.
Or anything like that.
Yeah, so we're watching real closely on that.
The way I understand this, we had twenty-nine people apply to be in kindergarten, both buildings. And we've decided that we could take it as a school district one.
Yes, and that was because that was someone who moved out.
But, and that's.
Correct, that's what.
That's all we felt we could fit into our school.
Based on class sizes.
Based on class sizes.
Right.
Because I mean, I think, I like Jessica's proposal, but I think I would like, I need to go class by class by class to really figure it out, but.
Well, that's what I was seeing, trying to do, Jessica and then Peter.
When were the, what's the right word, what do you jump in?
Uh, denial.
A denial?
Yeah.
When were the denials, when were the denials sent out?
June second.
June second, so.
Almost a month ago, so typically, would you guess that if somebody was going to appeal that decision, you would already know by now?
There's a timeline on the appeal, I think it's closed yet.
July seventh, and we've already received two appeals, but not because of our board policy, but because of class size.
And are there any, can you say, are those students, students that have siblings in the district, or not? So they would not be affected by this decision?
I guess one thing I should clarify too about why we got on the agenda, obviously, you know, I met with Mr. Toya a couple of weeks ago. We, you know, first corresponded by email or phone, and, and honestly, I had the same feeling as all of you. Of course, we'd love to keep the families together, and I thought, first of all, because of the state, the board needs to be aware of that. And, and that it'd be worthy of that discussion, so I'm personally, I think, in the same place as many of you. I'd love to simply say, yes, we should try to keep these families together, I'm also concerned about the class size. Now, the, the challenge is, we can even out the class, we have so many applications that we can. If we add another section, we can take the appropriate number of open enrollment to even the class size where we want, and the revenue will pay for those teachers. So that's not an issue, the, the money part, the whole, only issue is space. Can we have more, you know, we could get that one more classroom if we had to at Taylor Prairie, I mean, but, and that would be it. Winnicott, same thing, we could make space, of course, you know, the issue is when these students move on to GDS. Where we have the real issue, so that's the rationale, I think, of why we just didn't open up additional sections at Winnicott. Because we know that's going to create a problem and has it in the past, so that, that's our dilemma, and I think you're all aware of that.
But we did do that, so three, we took a whole section.
Several years ago, we opened a whole section, we had so many open enrollment requests for kindergarten, and that was when Maywood was open, so we had plenty of space as well. And we opened a whole other section because it was enough kids that it could pay for a teacher. When that section has been moving through now and hits Glacial Drummond, it is a problem, but, but we did that, Peter had a question.
We, we went through in detail all the enroll and stuff, all, you know, these things, and we made decisions about what our capacity was. And I think, I mean, if we're going to go look at it again, we're going to come to the same conclusion, so I mean, presumably, we're not going to say it's random. The, so I don't think we can, at this point, really dislike David's, it's a wise idea to revisit that, go through that item by item. And, and try and reevaluate those decisions in light of the information we have before us. So I don't think anything, your class sizes, our classrooms haven't changed, your class sizes haven't changed. And so I think it would be very difficult to do that. I also think that, as much, I really appreciate the, the bind you guys are in. The, we have a whole bunch of people who are in the same boat, and it'd be difficult, if it was just one, if we were looking, talking about just one student here, that would be difficult. We're not, we'd really have to talk about everybody together, we have to talk about the twenty-two, or whatever it is, together. And that makes it a much more difficult situation, and so it's difficult to open this up and, and to reevaluate this at this point.
I would like to just clarify, there's really three options the board would have, well, four, one is to do nothing, leave it alone. You could open up seats just at kindergarten, but understand that you, you cannot just say, we're going to open up one seat for the Toya family. Because if you open up one seat, every, all those go into the random drawing, so it may, you know, there's a twenty percent chance. So direct, you know, so if you're going to try to, you know, accommodate there, you know, you'd want to do the full five at kindergarten. And then the other option, of course, is do all families in any grade level, the twenty-two. But I just also wanted to clarify why I thought it was important that we have this discussion tonight, because not only because of the mistake that was made. But I just also wanted to clarify why I thought it was important that we have this discussion tonight, because not only because of the mistake that was made with the posted policy, also, and it's become apparent, I wanted to, I wasn't sure where all the board members were as far as, did you really understand what was happening with siblings? Because I certainly didn't until now, to, I mean, I kind of did, but I understand it more fully now, so I thought it prudent to have that conversation as well.
Well, and I think, I think that the fact that I, I was saying, I do recall having this discussion with a parent a couple of years ago who had applied for four K and wanted it to be in a school setting, was thought that was very important, and when the person was assigned to one of the daycare centers instead, because that's how it shook out, wasn't going to send his child, and, and happened to talk to me about it, and I said, you need to think about that, because if you don't send your child this year, your chances of getting in are very slim. Because, in kindergarten, because we were already seeing this happen, I think that's something we all need to be aware of too. And, and somehow, I think we need to make that clear for parents, that really, if you really want to open enroll here with a kindergartner, you really have to think about four K, because you are taking. Now, the, the only other thing is that the goal moves up, when you get, when you hit third grade, our goal is two students higher, so the chances that we could take someone in third grade are somewhat greater. Kindergarten and first grade are tough. Jessica, you had a comment?
Uh, my comment was pretty much exactly as you just stated. I think that we need to really look at educating our, you know, prospective four K families and kindergartners as open enrollers of that very same thing. It's something that, as a parent, I wasn't aware of, that, that being an issue, issue potentially, and as parents, you know, especially parents with young children, as they're planning out, you know, where they're going to be attending school, and thus the rest of their children, we need to make that really, you know, obvious. Wonderful for you to have caught that one.
Well, and it was just because the person happened to have the conversation with me, and I just, yeah.
Could, could we, may I comment on what we do currently do?
I, I guess I just wanna say that, you know, in the past, we did take a large number of four K, and that really has reduced, because we have seen it in place in our district population, which is great.
People who stay, yeah.
But we also have to remember, I can't continue to take a lot of four K if our enrollment is high, because it does create a bottleneck in Glacial Drummond.
Right.
So I am constantly talking with Danny Jarrett about, what does Winnequa have, what is, what do I have at Taylor Prairie? And when they come together, what's gonna happen? Because we know status quo right now, it's not gonna be a good situation.
Right. And, and with regard to your specific motion, Jessica, I just wanted to point out, we just hired another seventh grade teacher to reduce those class sizes. We have six open enrollment applicants for seventh grade, and there are eight sections, so we add those kids, every class bumps up another kid, and some may bump up two. So we, to some extent, contradict what we just did, so.
Right, and you know what, I would be, I, I wanted to make a motion just to get it out there before we had discussion. I would be definitely willing to amend, add an amendment to that of, you know, a grade specific number. My initial thought though is, you know, having this error on our end, in fairness, we can't just say for one family, like, you guys, you know, you took it upon yourselves to actually read the policy and, you know, and you made your plans based on that, and, you know, nobody else did, so too bad for you guys. But at the same time, it would be irresponsible of me in large part to suggest, you know, jampacking GDS. But you know what, it's, it's our mistake too, so I, I don't know how people feel about saying, you know, let's take all kindergarteners, or changing that, I mean, thoughts?
I, I guess I, I guess I'd like to go back to your other train of thought, to where we have a deadline that's approaching, you said July seven?
Yes.
That's approaching, and if no one has appealed due to this, this error, then so be it. But if we have one family, they, they were fortunate enough to catch the error, and they brought it forward. So I, I think, in my opinion, that they're the only ones that we, we allow them in.
We can't, we can't legally do that, we would have to, as Dan said, if we did that, we'd have to take all five who were denying and put, or.
Offer all five.
For kindergarten, we'd have to, right, we'd have to, otherwise, we could approve one more spot, but we'd have to put all five names in the lottery again, and their name might not be.
Let's offer the five.
Sure, but let's also clarify that we're not, we would be offering it to them. I, I would be willing to imagine if they have been appealed, yes, and it's almost July, they probably need other plans.
Already got other plans.
But just to give them that opportunity, perhaps all five will come in, perhaps only one, but in interest of fairness, but it's also illegal, you know, we, we have to do something along those lines.
Just to clarify the appeal process, when family appeals to DPI, if they agree with the appeal, then that family, we would have to admit, but I don't think it carries over to all the other ones. So, but we couldn't, if the DPI denied the appeal, we couldn't as a district say, you know what, though, we'll like to accept it, and we, you know, we couldn't. So, it, just to verify the point, we couldn't do it for a single family.
Right, I understand that.
But DPI could.
DPI could.
So that, so I guess.
And how they'll react to this, who, who knows?
Another thought would be, if the family appeals it, and DPI does decide in their favor, then we take the student. The other, the other issue is, because we're, there is some chance we would be creating another section, and we do have all these people who are denied, are on a waiting list. So if someone else leaves, a space opens up, and I don't know how that works, if they're kept in an order, if you have to draw again, or how that works. But it's possible that in, that as we approach August, it'll look like we need to open up another section, in that case, we would be accepting all five. Although, I don't know if they're all, I don't know if they're all at the same school. I mean, that's the other issue, sometimes people apply and we can't, well, it is three and two, yeah. I know, I just wanted to clarify that, because I think that's another.
You just have a question?
I didn't clarify anything, actually.
Just to clarify.
I thought I liked to, but I didn't really.
You can, you, these are the preferences that were listed by the parents.
Right.
So you could, if we had space, say, for five at Winnequa, even though parents had a preference at Taylor Prairie, we could say, we have a seat for you at Winnequa.
And we have done that before.
Do you want it or don't you?
Right, we have done that, because.
So you can break up however you'd like by school as well.
Do they then have an option to move if there were space the next year?
Yes.
Right, yeah, because we, we have done that before.
For example? Obviously not if there isn't any space, but if there is, they would have that option then.
Right, Susan?
Have we done a serious analysis? It would appear to me that the first thing I would do is go to Glacial Drummond and say to Renee, is there any chance that we can put another section in this school for this year? Because we've made a mistake, and we'd like to rectify it, gut feel, what's your feel, have we done that?
Yes, if we, we could create space for another section at Glacial Drummond.
See, that's a critical piece I need to hear, because that's the whole reason we say no at the lower level. So if in fact, because we're trying to rectify a, a, a mistake.
But we can't say that, but what we're talking about is kindergarten or first grade kindergarten students.
I'm asking in.
Seven years from now.
That's what I'm asking, that's the question, and the understanding is.
But seven years from now, that, that, that needs to be based on our current numbers.
All you can do is, Jessica.
Probably agreeing about how.
It's not gonna be perfect.
Is not this year, it's next year.
I'm talking about room.
We have a very large fifth grade at Winnequa this year, that's one size section bigger, so when they move into sixth grade next year, is, we are gonna be adding a section to GDS the following year. So yes, we could do it.
But they'll only be there three years, and this is a kindergarten class, so they'll be gone by the time this class passes.
Depends on which year, grade you add it. If we add a section this year for eighth grade, sure, they'll be gone, but if we add a section at a lower grade, we're gonna have a problem the following year.
Right.
Okay, so I guess my question is, if we added an additional section to kindergarten this year, one, is there space at Taylor Prairie? Two, okay, will there be space at Caddis Grove? And three, can, do we, I mean, sir, two people, two special ed people in a room where we can put one in, I, I don't know that.
Caddis Grove, you know, right now, there's been tearing back and forth with sections, and so an additional section there we can make work. Right, we're down next year by one as it is.
Yes, for space, yes.
I mean, it's not ideal, but yes, we've done it, we could do that.
Dennis is just smiling.
Yeah, it's really about class size. I mean, yes, Connie can make a room work if we have to add that, that'd be preferable, but the real issue is the actual size. Is the board comfortable going to the guideline, which is, you know, above the, the goal? And then the other thing is, if we open up seats right now, and we do get those other additional, you know, so that, that's the big unknown, we may be coming back anyway.
I guess I'm talking about a new section.
Our, our class size, our class size average, right, for, for Taylor Prairie next year is already one point four-three above the goal.
Right, that's why I'm looking at a new section.
And our class size at Winnequa is similarly one point two-five above the goal. So our current average class sizes in both of those elementary schools for kindergarten are already above the goal. They're below the max, but above the goal, so that's been where our cutoff has always been the goal for open enrollment.
We look at adding, what would happen, I mean, did, did we go down to sixteen if we added, where do we, what happens if we added?
Sure, if, if we said, okay, you know what, we're gonna add a section at Taylor Prairie next year.
If it's a five, who knows, they may not even come, let's say if we had five.
I, I think what we would do is, if, because of the residents, if we said, you know what, we are gonna add the section at Taylor Prairie, then we certainly wanna fill them up to the goals. So I think we would take enough open enrollment to get it to the goal, certainly not above.
But they might have to be willing to go to Taylor Prairie though, in that case, so, I mean, that's the other piece, even if we, even if we create another section, it would be at Taylor Prairie, it would not be at Winnequa.
It could help pay for the teacher we have to hire. They'd have to, yes. Correct.
So we could accept this student, but they would end up having to go to Taylor Prairie in that scenario.
Total application for kindergarten.
Right now, we have two hundred and thirty-eight kindergarten enrolled students, counting the three that Connie said, and we gotta look out for them too, I mean, they have to take.
Absolutely, right.
So I'm looking at a section.
Right, I mean, I got involved with the board, because I was emailing you guys about class sizes, my son was a kindergarten with twenty-four kids, I mean.
Well, that's right.
I know, yeah.
So.
That's the concern.
That's, that's.
Will we have to use your office?
Yeah.
I, I, I know, it's right. You know, just a few things to keep in mind, it's not only adding a teacher, but Deb and I share related arts. So that means we're also going to have to hire more fire, more art, more music, and we're gonna have to redo our whole schedule, whole buildings. I don't know, hiring whatever percentage of FTE for somebody, because they're already at one point oh FTE of what we share. So we're putting them in an overload, which they can't really do anymore, or we're gonna have to hire a point something for that, and that's kinda hard, the music and art.
Maybe in the end it could buy it, it would be easier.
Yeah, so it's not a budgetary thing, the, the revenue from open enrollment will pay for it, it's the actual people, finding the staffing is a challenge.
That's a good point, and I don't, I'm not sure, we had that discussion the last time we added a section at kindergarten, that's a good point, yeah, right.
Plus, we have, we have a future enrollment study coming to us soon, and there's a lot of growth, so.
Right.
Yeah.
A decision right now could really put us behind the eight ball three months from now.
Well, and that's the thing, looking ahead, when we get that enrollment study, I, I think it will probably be without question that the goal at some point is to get fifth grade out of GDS. I think everyone's aware of that. The question is when, that's, that's what we need to answer real soon. So that's the thing, if you do something now for kindergarten, will we have that problem solved by the time the kids get there, or not? And I.
So can we table this for a month and get more information?
Well, we have a motion on the floor, we have to vote up or down, but we have a. But we can, I mean, I think, I, I think what I heard the family say is that if we don't accept additional open enrollment tonight, they will file an appeal. So then it may or may not be taken out of our hands, and that may be, that may be the best way to handle this at this point. And then if the issue is forced, because we in fact get more kids moving in, and we don't have any choice, we have to have another section. We could then come back, even if their appeal was denied by DPI, even if our denial was upheld by DPI, if we create another section, we could still go back to the five people and say, we now have this other section, we now have room to, for you if you still wanna come. It's just we wouldn't know that till August, but that, that's how that would work, yeah, right, am I right on?
Again, I have to go back to the fact that this is our error, you know, and to have to put someone in that scenario for two months as they're trying to figure out where, you know, their kids are going to be educated, error that, you know, we inadvertently made. I think that we should really in good conscience try to solve it in the best way that we can without negatively impacting the rest of our kids.
You know, I, I would feel more that way if the policy very clearly said, we will accept siblings, but it doesn't say that. The, the policy doesn't make any sense the way it's worded, because it's clearly an option, it says both things, one right or the other.
And at the time that this policy was posted, enrollment for four K was already done, so decisions on, in, in order to enroll them in four K to get them into our program had already been passed. So this was stuff that was already new, and then the other part of it is, is that if we do decide to allow five families in at four K, that also puts us at jeopardy of losing all of our other appeals, because we're now going above and beyond what our current policy does say. So we potentially have.
Did you mean in four K or at kindergarten?
At any grade level.
At any grade level.
I'm just saying that, you know, the, the conversation that was talked about is the family decided not to enroll in four K, because they thought they could enroll in kindergarten. Well, four K was last year, this policy had stated that it was only a preference last year, and then December of this past year is when it, the mistake occurred. The other part of it is, is as Connie spoke, if you look at the last three years of our open enrollment, three years ago, we had forty-five kids in a, on four K, then we went down to twenty-five last year, now we're at ten. Next year, we could be at zero, and so every year that you decide not to apply for open enrollment at a point where there's an open spot, you do take that chance for the following year, not to even have an opportunity. You know, to, even though I would like to see families together, I mean, there's twenty-two families, but you also start exceeding those class sizes in the policy that's been set, that we're banking at these, at least these last two appeals on, which then could ultimately get overturned, and then you're looking at other grade levels plus the families.
Thank you.
So are there any other further questions, or are we ready to move on to the motions? And I would, I would repeat the motion, the motion was to, do you wanna repeat it?
Yeah, Jessica, is approval of adding additional open enrollment seats for two thousand fourteen fifteen for siblings of students currently attending under open enrollment as presented, why would second it?
Can I make an amendment to that?
Set everybody?
That would be, the, the emotion, as the motion stands, it would be all twenty-two, correct?
Yeah.
So you can amend your own motion if you want.
Uh, well, I'd like to change my motion to.
Or you can suggest a.
You make amendment.
You make, actually make an amendment.
That's what you're doing, you get a second.
Okay, I'm glad I have so many experts here, that's all we want to do.
It's only because we ran into this recently, so we had to read the rules again.
So my, my, I'm gonna offer an amendment to my motion to accept, my last thing here.
Kindergarten.
An addition, additional open enrollment seats for two thousand fourteen fifteen for grade kindergarten for siblings of students currently attending under open enrollment.
Second.
She is, so, so the amendment is to. The amendment is to amend the, amend the main motion to accept only open enrollment students for kindergarten who are siblings.
Offer, to offer them the opportunity.
Offer them the opportunity, correct.
Well, I'm just wondering, depend, well.
That's a good question, I thought that.
Decide whether we need to do it by seats at a school.
Yes.
Seat at a school.
Yep.
So you.
So you could say five kindergarten seats at Winnequa, an additional five.
But there are only two.
The applications we have are three at Winnequa and two at Taylor Prairie.
I see, yeah.
Okay.
But because, I'm just looking at the numbers though, I don't see that there's any advantage to doing it at Winnequa instead, because their number is only a fraction of the students, I mean, they've got. Winnequa's, Winnequa's class size average for kindergarten right now is twenty-one point twenty, twenty-five, and for Taylor Prairie, it's twenty-one point four-three, so they're both over the goal. So we run into that discrimination point that you just made, if we only accept it for one grade level, and we're already violating our policy to do it, then I think we, it, we are in danger of, I think we almost, I think we almost have to accept all of them or none of them, is how I would interpret that, but, but I.
Well, if, just to be clear, under the mo, if you accepted them based upon the application, the new class size projection would be twenty-two for each kindergarten, basically, at both schools.
And the goal is twenty.
No other new kids come into the district between now and, and they're walking in the door, right?
Yeah, well, in all likelihood, if we get more in, we'd be coming back and asking to add a section then.
We have been very careful about this policy, because we don't wanna get in the situation where we're forced to take students where we have a problem with size, and we, so we've been very careful about maintaining our, sticking, having a policy that's well explained, well clear, although we committed a mistake, but seeing that we, this well understood, and then sticking to it so that we don't end up in a legal situation where we're stuck, because we've been making exceptions, or because our policy isn't clear. We revised the policy several times to keep up with that, and sort of to make a hole in it this time endangers that work that we've done.
Yeah, I, I, I certainly appreciate the, your thoughts on that. I think that, you know, we use open enrollment as a pond that we dip into whenever we need to catch a fish. And I think that when, you know, we're welcoming families into our district all the time, when, you know, those tax dollars are gonna benefit us, and we make it work, and it's a fine, you know, it's, we're always, you know, walking a fine line between making it work and not making it work, and who knows, someone's gonna move in, someone's gonna move out. But I think, and particularly in this case, because it is a mistake that you could point at toward our district in making, informationally, that it's something that we should do to the best of our ability.
And I, I guess the only thing I would say, the other option is to let DPI make that determination. I mean, and they may determine that, and then we don't have that choice, but. Um, I, I just, I do continue to have a concern about, much as, it's one of those decisions where your heart wants to do one thing and your brain's telling you to do something else. Where I, I just think that, I am concerned about the whole discriminatory appearance that we, that we open that door by only accepting students in one class, but. Anyway, with that said, anybody else have a comment, or are you ready to vote on the amendment?
I agree, I, I agree, it should be all or nothing, and I don't think we're prepared for all.
So are we ready for a vote, so it's the amendment that we're voting on is to accept.
Are we voting on the motion or the amendment?
The amendment, we have to vote on the amendment first. Yes, it was, yeah. So the amendment was to accept open enrollment students and siblings in kindergarten for two thousand fourteen fifteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Did I hear, okay, okay, so the motion fails. So then the main motion is to accept all open enrollment requests who are siblings, which would mean all twenty-two at every grade level. Any other comments on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The motion fails. So then we will, then we still need a motion to accept the open enrollment. Let me get back to this, um, the open enrollment as proposed.
No, that's already been approved.
That's already been approved, okay, so we don't have to act on that at all, this would just be if we're gonna change it. Right, okay. All right. So possible approval of open enrollment, we just put it on there in case we wanted to change it, that was the only reason.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Um, then the next item on the agenda is discussion and possible approval of the teacher tuition reimbursement plan. Do you wanna pass that down to Joyce, so she has that for the reference? And Dan, I'll let you go on about that.
Okay, um, we had, had a discussion about this proposal at the last board meeting. If recall, it started with the teacher compensation committee. The personnel committee also reviewed the proposal, and then the full board heard it for the first time at our last meeting. And essentially, the proposal is to provide a stopgap, so to speak, for our teachers who are currently enrolled in a master's program or need to take coursework to renew licensure. We have right now no way of reimbursement. In the past, under the compensation plan, there was an opportunity for salary advancement. Right now, we don't have that salary schedule, and I think the direction the compensation committee is going is that they will look at alternative ways of looking at compensating for master's degree and other coursework. And so the tuition reimbursement is an opportunity to support those teachers in the requirements that they need, and to still encourage earning master's degrees. And, um, and so this proposal is to be in effect retroactively to second semester of the current year we just finished for teachers who took courses then, and then through the summer of next year, with the idea that we'll have a new compensation plan to the board by that time, that will likely include a component similar to this, but perhaps in much more detail. So it's to reimburse for a total of, um, up to fifty percent of the tuition costs. There's a cap on there based roughly upon the cost for UW, uh, system tuition.
Okay, is there a motion to, a motion to approve the tuition reimbursement plan as presented?
Some.
Is it a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Dan, I'm sorry, would you just reiterate, um, there is budgeted funding for this?
Yes.
I'm not sure, I may have dismissed it, but I remember in previous discussions, you had kind of made it clear that, um, that the costs were very similar, this was an additional cost, because we were paying in a different way.
Yes.
Okay.
In the past, we had budgeted for lane movement, and so we kept that amount in the budget. We think the amount we'll pay out will be far less than that. We don't know exactly how many courses will be, you know, put in for reimbursement, we're confident that will, that'll be definitely, um, well, we have enough budgeted in that respect. Is that accurate, Jared?
Do you feel comfortable that the guidelines in the, um, language, in the process, provides pretty clear direction for approval of that?
Yeah, with the, this.
Cause I, I don't wanna come back and have to say, well, you approved theirs and didn't.
Yeah, and ultimately, this proposal gives the authority to me to approve, and, but it does give guidelines, and, and so the idea is that will be very broad with, so we can gather data this next year about the courses taken, and so certainly anyone who's in a master's program, they're gonna be approved. And courses that would be recognized for, by DPI for licensure, um, approval or renewal will be approved as well. In the future, we might get a little more discriminant, but we wanna start broad.
There were some requirements when we moved, um, to the straight biology, chemistry, and physics class. There were some requirements for courses for teachers to take. Would that have been included in this?
If they're taking them now, yeah.
No, and, and if, if.
Those were qualified, certainly, yes.
With those, because they were not paid.
Right.
Okay.
And that was a question that came up from the teachers, was is there any way to make this retroactive to, and we, we can't do that. But it would be retroactive to January of this year, so the second semester of this year is teachers who've already taken classes, because there's nothing in place without the contract, but we can't go back and undo.
If we made a major curriculum change, that would be a.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good example of when it would. Yeah, we had a lot of discussion about the whole approval thing from the teacher compensation committee, as you can imagine. And people felt, felt comfortable with where, with the language. Any other questions? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the graduation, the graduate credit tuition reimbursement as proposed, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Then the next item on the agenda is discussion possible approval of the five-year capital projects plan.
Okay, you heard a proposal at the last meeting, it's the same plan, we do need board approval statutorily to have a five-year plan, and so, um, I think, it'll take any questions, Jared and Mark are here to answer any specifics on the plan, but it's the same plan you saw two weeks ago.
So is there a motion to approve the five-year capital projects plan as presented?
So.
Okay, so Peter moved, I'll second. Any comments or questions on the plan? None, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, let me try that again, there were some people, I think, perhaps not paying attention. All those in favor of approving the capital projects plan as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, that's okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is discussion and possible approval of the two thousand fourteen fifteen preliminary budget.
Okay, same thing, it's the same budget, it's already been presented, um, it's still preliminary, Jared will be present, well, this will be the budget be presented at the annual meeting. Certainly, the final budget will be when we have all of our revenue in, in October, so, um, you've seen it before, again, unless there are any questions, we're asking for approval tonight.
I move approval of two thousand fourteen fifteen budget.
Is there a second?
Second, over. Jeff.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Uh, then, discussion possible approval of the Wise Dash Local Consortium Agreement, which was also presented at our meeting two weeks ago. Dan, can I say?
Yep, and so we, again, are asking for approval, it is a sixty-six oh three agreement, it's a consortium among schools, and just, uh, recollection, um, I attached a memo that Andrew had written last time Andrew and Bill had presented, and the cost for this year would be fourteen thousand eight eighty-eight.
So is there a motion to approve, okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the Wise Dash Local Consortium Agreement as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Then we are on to new business with discussion and possible approval of an employment contract for the Cottage Grove School principal. Um, and the motion would be to approve employment contract for Dennis Griffin as the Cottage Grove School principal as presented.
Some moved.
A second.
A second, moved and seconded, any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and congratulations and welcome. Now the week begins. And, um, the next item on the agenda is discussion possible approval of the revised employment contracts.
I'm just gonna sign something.
I know. I have to get him before he changes his mind, to get you while you're still here. Discussion possible approval of revised employment contracts for school principals and associate principals, and I'll let you, and we have, the motion is printed, and we need to. And if you wanna say something, or you wanna, you read the motion first, okay?
I move approval of revised employment contracts for school principals Anne Schrader and Connie Paisley, associate principals Jeff Schreiner, Mike Whistler, and assistant director for literacy and special programs Deb Lyons as presented.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, and now would you like to say anything?
Just a clarification, these are revisions with regard to the length of term of contract to move all administrators to a two-hundred-and-sixty-day contract.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any, any other question or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Then the next item on the agenda is discussion possible approval of administrative compensation for two thousand fourteen fifteen, Jessica?
I move approval of administrative salary compensation for two thousand fourteen fifteen as presented.
And, is there a second? It's moved and seconded, questions or comments?
I just had one comment, that I, I did have some concerns about the application of differing percentages applied to different administrative positions, and then what might appear to be some inconsistency in the application of the percentage increase based on increase in contract days.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Then the next item on the agenda is discussion and possible approval of non-represented staff compensation for two thousand fourteen fifteen, Dan, do you wanna?
Okay, so all of our, um, non-certified staff, um, who are not part of a bargaining unit, which includes several groups, nutrition staff, department coordinators, administrative assistants, IT staff, and so on. In your board docs, you do actually have a document that lists every individual employee. The recommendation is for a two percent sale, um, increase, uh, per individual for two thousand fourteen fifteen.
Okay, is there a motion? Jessica?
I move approval of the non-representative, uh, representative staff compensation for two thousand fourteen fifteen as presented, under my readers.
Yeah, it's a, it's a two percent salary increase, do we need to have that in the motion?
Or it's on the document, but sure.
Yeah, as presented is fine, okay, I wasn't sure if we had to have that actually.
Well, again, it's easier to read it than Joyce can get it, and then when you go back and look, like I just did for the policy, the language is there, so.
So, um, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the salary increase for non-represented staff as recommended, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Then the next item is discussion of possible approval of coordinator contracts for two thousand fourteen fifteen.
And we have three individuals who have one-year coordinator contracts, uh, because they're contractual, you do need to approve those as well. It can be done in one motion, and I think the, um, the individuals are Catherine Jenkins with aquatics, Dee Mathis with school nutrition, and Diane Kraus with Dane County School. The career consortium, if you recall, we're the fiscal agent for that program, and so she is our employee, and they all have individual contracts to recommend, the contract recommendation has only, you know, minor changes as noted.
Uh, Jessica?
I move approval of coordinator contracts as presented.
There are seconds?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? All those in, is there a discussion, sorry?
One question, like, what is the effect of removing the insurers?
Right.
The names of the insurers?
It's just bad practice, we shouldn't have that carrier in the contract, because should the board choose to change carriers in the future?
Okay.
You'd have an issue.
But it doesn't affect the coverage at all, it just has to do with, okay, okay. Then it leaves the designation.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, then the next item is discussion of a proposal to add a gymnastics program for the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year. And we do have some people here.
We do, so you have a report from our activities director Jeff Schreiner, and I think we'll turn it over to Jeff if you'd like to present the proposal.
Well, I'm not gonna do any backflips or.
Oh, come on.
Oh, come on.
And tonight is discussion only, not for a vote.
Oh, okay, sorry, did I read that, I did read.
What is the vote? No, with the, with the discussion points on this, it's just to kind of clarify and bring it forward to you as far as where this was at and where we are today with it. And, uh, the parents that are here tonight kind of supporting this, they've, they have approached me and were working with me for the past two years to really identify why we couldn't have a gymnastics program in our district, what our hurdles were and stuff like that, and what could we do to see if we could overcome those. So for the past two years, we've been working on that, identifying those, we, we went the route of finding another school to possibly co-op. What I was sharing with them from the beginning is that, take a look at our facilities, we really don't have anything that could house the apparatus of spring floor, anything like that, so the startup costs were huge for us. And that was the big piece that was always in front of us, and exploring the co-op opportunities, all the schools that we contacted, there's only six schools in the Badger Conference that offer gymnastics, the closest one being Wanakee, uh, but they also co-op with DeForest already. We asked some parents and stuff, we're projecting some pretty sizable numbers that the other programs were pretty comfortable with the size of the teams that they had, or the place where they were at. Mount Horv, if you, uh, look at that with gymnastics, they're, they're a division two school, if we would co-op with them, they'd become a division one school. They'd kind of move them out of their place of finish with what they're comfortable with that they have going in Mount Horv. So the co-op position, or the co-op opportunities kind of stalled us as well. A big game changer, one of the parents brought in, uh, this year was Turner's, right down on Broadway and fifty-one. They have a facility that has all the apparatus and the equipment, and the, and the space to allow us to come in and use that as our gymnastics facility. That was a big game changer in the proposal piece for us. Uh, with that piece in place and the opportunity to, to use that as our home base, uh, brings me here tonight as far as a proposal to say that I think we've overcome, or we've addressed our, our stalling points or our issues as far as not having a program. Taking a look at our projection numbers, uh, over the next four years, we're on an increase. With now families hearing that there's a possibility of us having gymnastics, there's a little more excitement behind that, so, but our numbers are projected this next coming year at thirteen. When you look at the size of a gymnastics program, what I've learned with that is that is in the ballpark as far as size of teams and stuff like that. Uh, the two thousand fourteen fifteen season would have thirteen, as we move forward to two thousand seventeen eighteen, we would grow as, as far as seventeen that we're projecting right now. Talking with some of the parents, they're saying, there's a buzz out there that with this proposal, there's more kids that are interested in doing that. Which leads me to another part, as far as, right now, we have, that, this is a girls' sport as well, in, in winter time, we only have two girls' sports that are going, and that's nationally, they, they look at when they offer sports, we have an overload of female sports in the fall, and in the winter time, we only have two sports, that and girls' hockey and, um, um, and basketball. So what this would do, we got a lot of our student population, female student population, out there doing nothing. So what happens is, what's intriguing to me too, is we have, uh, thirteen girls that are in a club right now of gymnastics that could now come back to represent our school from the club base, and I think that's pretty, a pretty good feel for us to have some kids that are excited to come back and represent the school, a school sport with that. Uh, last year, you know, in addressing some as far as kids that are involved with gymnastics too, that might be their place or their piece that drives them, with the high school piece, they might be looking for a program with that. Now, if, in offering a program like this, it gives the opportunity for these kids and the families to connect in on, on a sport offer that we have. So, and, uh, you know, as far as, and gymnastics, doing a little history piece here with, with Monona Grove and gymnastics, you know, female sports really took off in the mid-seventies, gymnastics for us, we, we do house three conference championship trophies in the late seventies and early eighties with gymnastics. I did take a look at those, uh, trophies and take a look at the size of their teams, and they're all anywhere from eleven to fifteen members on that team and stuff. So the sport went away. So the sport went away due to participation numbers and stuff and it faded, kind of like our wrestling piece. And now we're seeing it coming kind of back around and stuff like that. So it is, you know, as an athletic director, I sit in adding sports to a program where I thought that it might not be happening. Here we sit today and we have student athletes and families that are interested in bringing it back to the school. So it's kind of a pretty neat place for me to be a part of that as well. So, but I open that up for any questions? And then also our parents, if you have any questions from them.
I'm so excited about this program coming. I think it's great to have.
She could do backflips.
Yay! And so I think it's so great that we're gonna be offering our girls another winter sport, first of all. Phenomenal. But then I also have a little almost four-year-old who is certain, you know, you're gonna have to wait a couple of years for her, but she will be right there with gymnastics. My question for you is how will you provide for transportation between the high school and Turner's? Or is that something that...
It's a good question and it's one where our families, you know, as residents of Cottage Grove, too, our families are kind of been exposed and introduced to the transportation routes and stuff. Right now with our spring sports, we have baseball, softball, soccer, all going in Cottage Grove. So obviously the older kids that have a mode of transportation, they can get there. That's a piece that we still have to continue to explore because we're gonna face that with wrestling as well, with co-op with McFarland. And do we have a shuttle bus or do we have something that allows those younger kids to have that happen? I would, that's a good question maybe for, you know, some of the parents, students, thoughts on that or...
We are thinking about that as well. One of the pieces is the practice time at Madison Turner's would be from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. As the self-cooking school year fits the food. So our girls are already all, our Matown Twister gymnasts, they practice from 6:00 to 9:00 at night. And so we're used to the old carpool running around. We haven't figured that out yet. We're probably, and I'm sure you've heard this a lot, a set of motivated moms that will do anything to get this program going, so we'll make it work if I have to drive the bus myself.
All right.
It's a great question, I mean, you still need to iron out, you know.
Well, it is a different situation when they're not coming from school. I mean, they'd be at home first, they'd be going from home to practice, so it's, I'm not sure what our...
I like the system that we have where the, there's a bus going from Monona Grove to GDS and that could be a meeting point, it could be GDS and then you could do...
I just, I guess my thought when I think about it is that I hope that, you know, this program is successful and grows and grows and that people who aren't already used to providing that transportation or, you know, to get their kids, you know, somewhere and if they're not able to, if we have a, you know, a safety net, so to speak, to help get those kids involved too.
And if I could add, just as a parent who pays the wazoo, if I might get to Matown, there are so many kids out there that have had to drop out of Turner's or Matown because they can't afford it, which for struggling parents to afford it every month. So this would be a great opportunity for our girls to not have to pay that huge chunk of money every month to do what they're great at. Our kids are all high-level gymnasts, six, seven, and eight levels, so if they're working hard, they'd be a great asset.
There's a lot of interest too for a J and B team and just for starter programs. A lot of new clubs coming up in the area. And I'd be very interested in a new summer program. I've had a trophy just to get the younger levels going, so we've talked about that. Do we teach our kids in the yard right now and all the neighbors? If the energy opened up, that would be nice.
Wow.
You're tumbling the streets.
And don't we currently have, I want to say, several sports that provide their own transportation to practice?
Well, yeah, they find, they coordinate rides and things like that with families and stuff.
Right, the school does not provide the transportation, but they make it happen.
Right, you know, in listening to the conversation, you know...
You're not the only offsite facility.
Right.
At least you don't have to buy pads and skates and...
But the, you know, the, the, the practice time is what'll be interesting because we do the shuttle bus that goes to Cottage Grove and to Monona back and forth like that. That we are, where Turner's is, it's almost on the route too. So could it swing by and pick up and drop off?
It's just by Wendy's or...
Yeah, that could be part of the route.
Oh, that would be really nice.
Because we, you know, we've practiced at Winnicott with our baseball and stuff, so the bus would, and also down at Ahouska Park with baseball. So we've routed that bus to come through there and just make those spots. And we would just have to hit our times that way, tell families that where the pickups are gonna be. So that lies ahead, there's, you know, it's exciting to have a place like Turner's come in. That was a big game changer for us to be able to bring this proposal forward, so.
And I, Jeff had presented this previously to the personnel committee and I was really pleasantly surprised by how affordable the rental would be through Turner's.
Right.
It's not a lot.
So, go ahead.
And the lady in charge of Turner's used to be a Matown coach, so she knows all of us. So I think she was more than happy to help.
She would too.
She loves our kids and we miss her.
So there are expenses in the, obviously to start things up and everything like that. What I would propose is that our first year, we don't, you know, go full out. We explore as we begin and we get into it. After two years, we bring back a report to the board as far as what we've grown into or did not grow into and kind of give you a recap as far as where we've been and what's happened there. But at this point, you know, I feel, I feel good about bringing this proposal forward and think that we're in a position, not only with the support of the families of the students that are involved, but also a place, a facility to do this and start in on it.
So right now, in terms of transportation, do our, say, our baseball kids when they practice at Ahouska, do they have to get from school to there by themselves and then the late bus picks them up from there and takes them back? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct. They get down there, but what we find is that the number of riders on that late bus...
There aren't many, right, because there are nothing.
Either parents come through to pick them up on their way home or they're finding that they're coordinating rides and stuff.
They used to get left, get actually, that was before you were there.
I think, you know, the kids that play baseball may take them to the, in the late bus after school. I was sitting on the Cottage Grove.
So Jeff, still the athletic fee applies and all of that?
Yep, still applies, just like any other student athlete going out for a sport then.
Any other questions or...
So there's a, there's a separate charge for a home meet?
There is, and we were talking about that earlier, it's a $500 charge to host a home meet. Badger Conference schedules are two, are set two years ahead of time. So as we enter into, if approved, as we enter into next year, we will not be a part of the Badger Conference schedule because that's already in place. I've already talked about that with our Badger Conference athletic directors and that's fine. What they would do though is the following year, we'd become a part of that schedule and we'd be looking at either hosting two or three home meets there. Now Turner's is telling us, they're not, they're only gonna allow us to host two home meets per season and it's gotta be on a Friday night. Now that bumps up against the Badger Conference language and that's... The Badger Conference is not gonna tell us, no, you can't do it because you can't host. They're gonna, they're gonna dovetail us into that. But the $500, we were talking about that as far as, I don't feel we're gonna get enough people to come and pay a gate to cover our $500 expense. So that's gonna come down to planning ahead of time. If we know we're gonna have two meets there, we're gonna have to do some planning to offset those costs going into the season, so.
All right, so this will be on the agenda for approval in July?
In July, yes.
We only have one meeting in July for the...
And the date on that one or...
July 23rd.
July 23rd, yeah.
We don't have the first one. Are you under time constraints?
Am I?
Is, time, is there, are there time constraints for the program?
We can't do that, we can't do that because it's not a deadline.
I'm saying, I'm line out of my head, I just want 260 days.
I was, I was wondering about if they had, the Badger Conference required that. Is there any reason that this decision would have to be made whether 23rd or any specific...
The answer is no. In contact, contacting the WIA on this as well too. What they're minimum requirements is that we participate in four meets or contests gymnastics-based in order to be tournament-ready. That's what we're looking at doing is getting our kids exposed to as much as we can next year and stuff. So really, it's getting it approved now, getting our parents on board, getting, getting around our startup to go forward with that. Turner's is in a place, it's kind of, it's kind of one where their agreement, it'd be nice to be able to go forward and lock that down before all of a sudden they make, they have a change of mind or something like that. So it's kind of, that'd be the only urgency, I guess, is to tell our parents back here and say, you know, go get them and let's, let's, let's do this. They, they were ready, they were ready to start two years ago. And so other than that, no, we're, we're in a place where...
I just thought if WIA wants you to move...
Well, I shouldn't say that because August 1st, I do have to send a, by, by the first couple of weeks of August, I do need to send to the WIA what our sport offerings are gonna be for the year.
Well, July 23rd.
Yeah.
Right.
Is there cost of away meets or just home meets? Is that like a rental fee or what?
Uh, no, the away meets are, it depends, if it's an invitational, obviously there's gonna be an entry fee on that. But if it's a dual, it's just your transportation.
So what's the $500, is that rental?
That's for Turner's, that's the price they put on it to use their building. That's, and that is a clarifying question that I'll have to ask from them. Is that included in their rental fee or is that an additional $500? By the way, I read their contract, it's just an additional $500.
I'm not for it, it's meeting, it's enough for our kids, I'm not for it.
So they would be able to participate in meets in the first year or just not host any? Okay.
Correct.
Right, okay. You said the schedule was set, I just wasn't sure.
We could still host, but it's not gonna be a part of the Badger Conference schedule because that's already set.
I see what you're saying, okay, got it.
Do we have a clause ready to go?
Got to get approval first and so...
So that's another disadvantage of, I mean, the only way we could fix that would be to have an urgency meeting and knowing how hard it is to do that. I think I probably can't do that.
No, we, we've discussed this in the timeline, we're fine. You know, we're looking for a discussion, general, you know, thoughts from the board. From my hearing, we're pretty likely to approve it, so several things you can start to get, you know, rolling right now and then.
I think it sounds great, it's nice to see, see the interest again. It's great, it's for, so they can do it. Okay, any other questions or... Thank you very much and thank you for waiting. All right, the next item then is topics for the August 20th Board Workshop. And we had kind of a few, we did, we did finally settle on a date of August 20th and John Bales, who is the executive director of West and now was, is the former superintendent in the Forest, will facilitate the workshop. And we just wanted to get an idea before we start setting an agenda for it or planning for it, what kinds of topics and things we already had were basically communications.
Yeah, I think with the communications, I think we're gonna shoot for giving a presentation the week before at the Committee of the Whole in August, as far as where we're at with that.
On the communication plan.
Plan, yeah. But there certainly could be a follow-up piece at the workshop about, you know, the board's, you know, role with that and expectations. So I think one way or another, that, that certainly should be part of it. We had talked about the agenda for the board reports, as far as what type of administrative reports. I'm gonna have a draft schedule for the entire year of our board meetings as far as the agenda items that we'll share that evening with a list of possible reports that you'd like to hear from, feedback that I've gotten from either as a group or individual board members. But that'd be an idea to prepare as well, what do you want to hear about? Besides the things, we have a number of reports that are required by policy that you hear every year, but also whatever sorts of things. I also certainly have recommendations, but I think it'd be an opportunity to get feedback as well from board members, you know, so we can clarify that and set the agenda for the year, hear the reports that you're gonna get. And I think we did talk about having a little bit of a discussion, it's in general, about board governance and, you know, what sorts of things, you know, are we gonna, you know, or will you as a board have as agenda items for discussion reports versus, you know, even action? There are some things that, we certainly are policy-driven in many, in most instances on that. But I think we, we talked about that that would be a worthy discussion as well. Just a little bit of thing about, you know, governance protocols and so on.
So Susan?
Well, it was my understanding that the things that we had talked about, and I think we're close on this, but it was my understanding that one of the things is we wanted to come to a consensus on board decision-making. What, what's our expectation for board decision-making? Because if I say, I really need this, not the morning of or two days before, and everybody else's know the morning of, it's just fine, then that's, that's where it's gonna be. Because the majority controls. So I think it would be really helpful, then there's nobody to blame, there's, you know, here's, it's kind of like when we were doing the administrative salary review and obviously we need to update that. But we had an expectation for what was gonna be included in making those, the process. And I just think, you know, it's time we really had that discussion and we thumbs up and if it's four to three, tough luck, that's the way it is. But as a majority, this is what we're gonna do and it's how we're gonna do it. This is what the expectation is. Because then I think it just cuts down on the bicker time.
And that, and that was actually part of what we had in mind on the, when Dan talked about follow-up to the communication plan and, and that probably wasn't clear, but was that we did want to specifically talk about internal communication and communication with the board as part of the board workshop as well and what people's expectations are, what level of communication, when, that kind of thing, so. And it kind of went along with the annual calendar, as well as like what kinds of topics are coming up and so when should the board start hearing about this? That's a piece of that, so that's, thank you for clarifying that.
And it definitely is related. But again, expectations for board decision-making, because I know that, that there were comments about that and I think one of those was in relation to the staffing plan. That there was awareness at, at one level very early on, as we're president, about that and maybe not of the other board members and, you know, how much, just maybe a little earlier. Knowing we'll get more later.
That's what it was just, yeah.
But, but it was specifically about the board decision-making. You're right, it's related to communication, the overall communication plan. And then I think it is helpful if we talk about what's the expectation about things we want to know. So I, I want to know, you're on the, I mean, I'm on the cable commission and I did not know you were on the, that's just an example, that you were on the interview committee for the new cable director. And had I, had the board known that, maybe members of the board who would have wanted to make comments to you about, I think this is really important as you go forward and what you're looking for. Just, again, the AODA and just that kind of thing.
And that, that's part of what we, what we would talk about under communication. Level, what level of communication do all of us expect? That's one of the questions.
And then, and not just us though, right, we're gonna talk about also...
Right, but on that, related to that issue, yes, the board, what does the board really want to know about? And then other, the whole communication plan. Well, I think the other thing is by bringing the communication plan the week before the Committee of the Whole, that may inform to some extent the discussion at the board at that workshop. Because we already have that in mind to be a topic and we can keep John informed on what that would look like too. Any other general concerns or certainly if you think about things after tonight, email them to and at some point we'll talk more about. We can send out a tentative plan and see how that looks to people.
Who's, who's the guy, John?
John Bales was the former superintendent from DeForest. He's currently the executive director of West. And he'll facilitate.
He took over, the other guy's, who was that guy's?
Miles Turner.
Miles Turner. Oh, Miles Turner, okay, that, the other guy.
Right, right. And we thought it would be helpful to have a facilitator just so that Dan can be more of a participant and I can be, not that that stops you from being a participant, but it's just easier if we don't have to facilitate and lead the discussion to have, bring somebody, so, yeah. All right. Then, future agenda items, we do have, we, well, we'll be talking about reports. We do have some reports coming up there, I think there's a data, another data retreat in July or... And we, you know, one of the, one of the questions that's come recently is we haven't heard kind of the end of the year, we usually get, whether, end of the year student activities report, overall student performance report, those kinds of things will be coming up. Possibly not until August, but...
Yeah, we'll certainly look at the, all the reports the board has gotten previously. We would not take those off the list unless you decide to do so at the workshop. But otherwise you can plan on getting those same reports. But it's really to talk about, you know, beyond, you know, what you've gotten.
Right.
You know, again, the board may have a different thought, I know that, remember Susan, we had talked about this, Port Atkinson had a system and it worked for them, I don't know that it would work for anybody else, but they actually picked five areas each year that...